All right, let's be called to order on this Tuesday, August 26, 2025, Kershaw County Council Meeting. We've been called to order. Next item on the agenda is the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilman Sammy Tucker Jr.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let us all stand, please. Open our heads and open our hearts. As we come before you, Lord Father, we say thank you for all the wonderful magnificent things that you have done in our lives. We ask you to continue to bless us over this week and, Lord Father, give us grace and mercy over this holiday weekend that we're coming upon. Watch over our families as they travel from various destinations. To be with family, and, Lord Father, we ask that you continue to bless the minds and hearts that's on this dais. Let us be able to agree and disagree, but always come to some type of consensus to do what is good for your children and your people here in Kershaw County, South Carolina. Bless our men and women who are out fighting for our freedoms and liberties, Lord Father. Protect them and return them home to their loved ones as they continue to do the duties that they have sworn upon. Now, we ask these things in your son, Jesus' name. Amen?
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Tucker. Just for the public's benefit, Mr. Jones should be here in approximately 25, 30 minutes in person. And do we have Mr. Tomlinson on the line? He may be calling in at some point. He is traveling for business, but wants to call in and participate as he's able. Next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda item number four. Do we have any motions?
Make a motion that we adopt the agenda as submitted, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
House, do we have a second?
Yes, there's a second.
I'll second.
I thought you had a second already.
And I would also like to make a motion to amend.
Okay, what's the motion?
My motion to amend, I would make a motion that we amend the agenda to remove item 14, executive session, and defer that or move that to, we can handle that issue at next agenda item.
Next council meeting?
Next council meeting, I'm sorry.
All right. I think I understand the motion. Any discussion?
Point of clarity, there's no executive session for any reason tonight.
Correct.
Okay.
All right. Any discussion? We've got a motion on Mr. Tucker. All right, we'll move.
He has a second on his, second it.
I'll second.
That's what I thought. All right, any further discussion?
No.
Okay. Move it to a vote, all in favor of the motion to amend. Passes unanimously those who are present voting. Ms. Hannah, that brings us back to the agenda. Mr. Tucker, sir. I don't think Brand's online. Staff's gonna let me know whenever he comes on. We're back to the original agenda as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move it to a vote, all in favor. All right, the agenda is amended, passes unanimously. Ms. Hannah, item number 14A is deleted and moved to the next council meeting. All right, that brings us to public comments. Mr. DeBose.
We have one speaker signed up for public comments. Lynda Franklin Moore, subject is planning and zoning.
Ms. Moore, please. Good evening.
I wanted to take this opportunity to thank the Planning and Commission Chairman Ned Towel for his hard work and dedication and tireless efforts. He spent countless hours free of charge working on the Airport Overlay District, the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, the ZLDR, and the subdivision moratorium. Under his leadership, this Planning and Zoning Commission has been more proactive, responsive than any planning commission that I have known since 1995. So I wanted to commend him on that. And it's my understanding that he may not be reappointed. I understand some of you felt that Ned pushed you into the vote on the moratorium, but it was the right thing to do. Councilman Schumake even amended the 180-day moratorium to 225 days, and he even wrote that amendment himself. So thank you for that, Mr. Schumake. I would urge council to see past any differences and reappoint Mr. Towel to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Mr. DeBose, no one else signed up?
No, sir.
All right, that concludes public comment. That moves us on to item number 6A, 100 public hearings. No vote needed. This is 6A, and unless there's any summary from staff, this is regarding a joint industrial and business park between Kershaw County and Lee County. Any summary from staff needed at all?
No, sir.
Do we have anybody signed up?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anybody present wishing to speak on item number 6A on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the next item. We've got some public presentations on the agenda tonight. First one's item number 7A. I'll make a motion that we hear from the sheriff on this public presentation related to a training award. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Schumake has a second. Any discussion at all? We move it to a vote, all in favor. Raise your hand. Mr. Tomlinson's online. Mr. Tomlinson, can you hear me? Apparently not. Okay. Well, for those who are present and voting so far, Ms. Hannah, it's unanimous. Does this show he's live? Okay, well, we've got a quorum who voted, so we're good. Mr. Sheriff, please.
As much as y'all like to hear me talk, I'm not gonna be talking much tonight. Our victim's advocate, Lee Thompson, came to me a few weeks ago and told me about this program and this training, and he was very passionate about it. He's a real good victim's advocate. So when I saw his passion, I knew that we needed to get involved with this program. And I'm gonna let the ladies, the experts, come up here and explain it to you tonight and try to keep it as brief as we can.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Sabrina Gast. I am the statewide forensic nurse director with the South Carolina Victim Assistance Network, and thank you for allowing us to be here today. Just real briefly, I wanted to explain a little bit about SC Van and why we're here. So SC Van was created in 1985 in a response to a mandate to the South Carolina Crime Victims Bill of Rights, for a network of service providers to be informed and to better protect and serve victims of crime. For over 30 years, SC Van has been the go-to agency as the voice of victims of crime and the resource for the providers that care and serve them. SC Van fulfills three main objectives. One, to ensure all crime victims receive access to and assistance from the criminal justice system. Two, to provide and improve the quality of services that are provided to crime victims by victim advocates. And three, to ensure that the criminal justice system adequately serves victims of crime. To fulfill those objectives, SC Van advocates on behalf of victims and witnesses of crime, maintains a communication network, enhances public awareness, facilitates research and evaluation, serves as technical support, facilitates quality training, provides education regarding legislative initiatives pertaining to crime issues, coordinates policy development, manages one-of-a-kind programs, and encourages citizen and victim participation in the criminal justice process. In 2019, SC Van hosted the first forensic nurse examiner task force meeting, and it included partner agencies from the Attorney General's Office, the South Carolina Law Enforcement Division, the South Carolina Hospital Association, the South Carolina Coalition Against Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault, DSS, solicitors, forensic nurses, and physicians. This group meets regularly to discuss issues surrounding victims of sexual assault, strangulation, domestic violence, and elder abuse. Today, we are here to focus on one of our projects, the Safe Designation. The Sexual Assault Forensic Excellence Designation is a voluntary designation program that is overseen by SC Van and its forensic team. We are excited to be here in Kershaw to award the Kershaw County Sheriff's Office and Sheriff Bowen with the Safe Designation. I'm gonna let Amanda, who is the driving force of our Safe Designation, explain a little bit about what the Safe Designation is.
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, everybody. All right, thank you all for letting us come here tonight. I wanted to just kind of tell you a little bit about the Safe Designation and what that means. I know that you've probably seen like a trauma center or a stroke center for hospitals, and you know that you can take a trauma there or a stroke there. But there's not a way for victims to know where they can go to be seen for a sexual assault. And so, let's face it, that might not always be the first place that they go. They might go to law enforcement first, or EMS, or fire, or whoever. And so, we didn't want to make that designation be solely for hospitals. We decided to make that designation be for any discipline that may come into contact with these victims. And so, we provided, we created and provided a training, and we made that training mandatory. This is a voluntary designation, so nobody has to take part in it. But the agencies that are choosing to take part in it are going above and beyond to say that they want to take the best care that they can of these victims. So the training includes things like trauma-informed care, how to preserve that evidence, how to take care of that victim until they can get them where they need to go, some human trafficking basics, as well as strangulation. So there's a lot of components kind of crammed into that little session, but it's something that we want to make sure that everybody has access to and that all of our agencies that are taking part in it, they can kind of go above and beyond, and they can get some recognition for it. So today, actually, this is only the fourth law enforcement agency in the state to take part in this designation. So that's huge. So they actually went through all of their regular officers, as well as I did trainings for their school resource officers. So to have everybody take part in the training was great. So actually, we're very proud tonight to be able to present this designation, which will be good for two years, and then they can renew. So only the fourth law enforcement agency in the state to obtain this designation.
Yeah, take a picture. Yes, if there's no further presentation, you can come up here with the staff members you'd like to participate, sheriff, anyone you want to participate, so we can take a picture.
Always just stand right here.
Stand behind me, so you can do it over my head. It's okay. I don't mind. In fact, in many ways, it's a plus, right?
I'm gonna say tall guy, can you go in the back?
You can look really tall, man.
You gotta get on Ben's side. All right, keep that laugh and going. That's working. That's working. Very good.
Before we let y'all go, council members, any questions, comments?
I do have one, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Tucker, please.
On these safe designations, they're, they're not disclosed, am I correct, to...
No, they are. Actually, we partnered with the Attorney General's Office, the Hospital Association, and SLED. And so, the three of us, or the four of us, came together to create this designation. So while it's not mandatory and it's not legislatively mandated, it does have a lot of important parties backing it. And actually, there's a map that has all the designations on it, and we have that map, and then it goes on the AG's office website. So that way, you get the extra publicity for it.
And the only reason I'm asking, being a prior law enforcement myself, it's safety for the victims.
Yeah. And so that way, they'll know which, you know, where they can go and those sorts of things. So it's public, it will be public, and those victims will be able to know which hospitals and stuff that they can go to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Any other comments, questions? Who are the three other counties that beat us to it?
How you let Sheriff Barrett beat us?
Thank you so much for your organization and your presentation. Thank y'all for coming out tonight. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Mr. Tomlinson, I forgot to recognize you. Any comments, questions?
I have none, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Brand. All right, gentlemen, that takes us to item number 7B on the agenda. Alliance Engineering Presentation placed on by Vice Chairman Russell Brazel. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to have a, make a motion for Alliance Engineering to update us on all current projects.
How you let Sheriff Barrett beat us?
Thank you so much for your organization and your presentation. Thank y'all for coming out tonight. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Mr. Tomlinson, I forgot to recognize you. Any comments, questions?
I have none, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Brent. All right, gentlemen, that takes us to item number 7B on the agenda, Alliance Engineering Presentation, placed on by Vice Chairman Russell Brazel. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to have a, make a motion for Alliance Engineering to update us on all current projects, to include Woodward Park, all the baseball fields in the Mount Pisgah area, and the boat ramp, and the improvements in West Watery. Did I miss anything?
I don't think so.
There he is.
We got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We got a second. All in favor? All right, come on up.
Oh, phone, phone line.
Oh, Brent, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
There we go. Present away, sir. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Kyle Clampett with Alliance Consulting Engineers. We do have a few slides that we ought to put up for you. Danielle, if you have that handy, put it up. I have a flash drive as well. As, as Councilman Brazel mentioned, again, Kyle Clampett with Alliance Consulting Engineers, there is one more bonus project we're gonna talk about, is Mount Olivet, I believe. It's item number 11 on your agenda tonight, too. So we're gonna talk about the recreational projects as well as the other project. There we go. All right. So the five projects we're gonna talk about tonight are Kershaw County West Recreation Complex, rehabilitation of the ballfields of both Boyd Young and Copeland, the Watery River Veterans Park Boat Ramp, Woodward Park, and then Mount Olivet Roadway improvements. Those are in no particular order, it was just the order we have set for tonight. First one up is the Kershaw County West Recreation Complex. What you see here is the conceptual plan that was put together at the start of the project itself, envisioning approximately 210 parking spaces and an access roadway through the park. No improvements to the ballfields themselves, essentially limited to just the parking and roadway. Here you see the construction plans as those evolved. Essentially, everything pretty well stayed the same from the time we went from conceptual to construction plans. The only thing that was added was some curb and gutter around the parking lot, increase in concrete sidewalk, and some additional fencing. Here's some current photos. Those were from Friday of last week. Each Friday, our company flies the, goes to each of these sites and then flies our drone. We have aerial footage taken on Fridays. Each week, it allows you to do a 360-degree drone rotation around the site, but these are some still images showing progress. About ready to put stone down. Essentially, grading operations are nearly complete. And the timelines, as you see on the screen here, we're looking around October completion date for the contract. We are on schedule for this project, so anticipating completing that in the next 60 days. And I'm finally called. Yes, sir.
If we may, and Chairman, if I may.
Yes, sir. It's your agenda item. You can ask questions as you like, or get through the presentation and ask at the end, or however you'd like.
Well, I think as we address each one, we can just, if anybody has any questions about any one in particular, while we're still on the topic, Derek, do you have any questions regarding...
Not on this one, no.
Sammy?
I do, best vice chair, if you don't mind. Kyle, lighting, was there lighting in the initial bid, or was that something that we did a change order on? Will there be lighting? Can you...
At this time, we do not have lighting in the scope on, on the contract right now. Let me pull up the...
There are lights out there.
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, there are on this one, so let me pull that. Contractors...
We had done a lighting...
On this one here.
Right, we did, but I don't know if there's an additional in the parking lot area that we're doing, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Proceed.
Yep, so we do have the lighting here, and let's see if we call out the number of lights on... Yeah, the lighting is separate from the contractors. That is, that is separate from the contractor's bid.
All right, so...
But I can get that quantity to you, on number of lights.
Okay, so there was, there was something added to...
The only thing added from the time of the preliminary cost opinions to now for the contractor's scope was the curb and gutter, additional fencing, and some concrete sidewalk.
Okay. So if we go through a change order process, is, are those things that you would bring to us?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we sent a letter similar to this, a letter here like we do for a pay application. We would present a letter to Kershaw County with our recommendation, if we feel that it is within the normal unit prices that are standard, whether that's the unit prices established for the project, or with, if there's not a unit price, then we would just state if that's a normal construction standard price for today's market.
Okay.
We send a recommendation letter to the county at that time.
Well, we want to make sure that we're staying within budget and contingencies on...
Understood.
...these projects with the monies that are allocated. So I think there may be a finance request coming from the finance committee, so we'll wait to hear from that, to talk more about that. But thank you. Everything's going well at this, this park?
Yep.
Compression tests are good?
Yes, sir. Yep, we have plenty of records of those for anybody that wants to read through them in detail, but yes, sir, we are past the construction test, a compaction test, and if any of those do fail, they go back through and repair that at the contractor's expense.
But everything's on, on track and on target?
Yes, sir.
Perfect.
Yes, sir. All right, and Kershaw Builders Incorporated of Lugoff is the contractor on this project.
KBI.
KBI. Yes, sir. Next up is Boyd Young and Copeland Ballfields. So we, essentially, you're looking at the conceptual plans here. Initially, this was conceptualized as essentially a rehabilitation of the parks. The intent was to try to keep the existing fencing, keep the dugouts, keep the foul poles, and just some minor regrading. As we got into construction plans, it was determined that the condition of that site needed a little bit more improvements beyond that. So it was, the scope was changed before bidding to go ahead forward with replacement of fencing, replacement of dugouts, replacement of foul poles on the site itself. This project is being constructed by Contractor Services of Kershaw, not Kershaw County, but town of Kershaw. So they are, here's some photos here currently. Getting ready to start putting in conduits this week for irrigation. So we're also inside of 60 days before completion on this park as well. And there you see the construction contract completion date of October 22nd. So this, just like with KC West, we are looking at October completion for this project.
Danny, you, you got any questions? That's your neck of the woods, brother.
No, I've kind of kept up with this, so I'm, I'm good. I'm good with it.
We feel like everything's within contingencies as well on this project.
As you mentioned, I think the finance update is being worked on, and that'll be presented to you for the full details of all the dollars associated with the projects.
I would ask this, in the parking areas around these ballfields, are there gonna be some type of gravel or something placed in the parking areas, or is it just gonna be graded?
Right now, let me go back to the construction plans here. Right now, that scope is not included in there, but if it, if we find from the financial reports that there's budget available, we'd be happy to work with the contractor to get that added.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Next up is the Watery River Veterans Park Boat Ramp. Here's a conceptual layout of the project itself from original concept. The majority of the change essentially here was the direction of angle on the floating dock position, really flipped from upstream flowing to downstream, flowing to help prevent from debris. I believe we talked about that at a previous update meeting here in front of council. This is showing the construction plans themselves. Here are some photos from last Friday. We are excited to report that the river level as of today is back to the condition where we can get back out there and putting in some concrete. So you should see some concrete trucks going in this week. Assuming the river levels stay where they are, we have been in communication with the operators of the dam. They've given us a window from Thursday to Friday of this week to keep the levels as low as they possibly can. They were above the condition of the site from August 5th through the 21st. So over this past weekend, we finally saw some break and were able to access the site. So concrete's going in this week.
That's what happens when you get rain every day.
Yeah, that, that does contribute to the river level for sure, sir. And so, we are prepping for the pads. We should be putting in two 80-foot runs of concrete this week, and then we need about another two weeks and then finish up the parking lot itself.
So just to clarify, the, the first two pads have been pushed into the, into the river. Isn't that right?
They are in their final location.
Okay.
Yep, so we've got about 80 feet of run to do above those.
Have they been, have they been checked since the high water, and everything still stable?
Yeah, we've been looking at those yesterday and today.
Good.
Look at those, everything still seems to be checking out. We, and we're starting with those, prepping the pads for the rest of the concrete, starting today, and we should see concrete going down tomorrow, Thursday, and Friday.
So after, I want to make a point of clarity, just for the public. We had, on two occasions, we had concrete removed that was poured incorrectly, and that was at no cost to Kershaw County.
That is correct. In addition to that, the Contractor Services of Kershaw switched concrete vendors as well, and they are utilizing a different concrete vendor, installer. Now, I'm gonna make sure it's clear, not the...
Right.
Material supplier, but the installer itself was changed, and we've seen much better performance with this new group.
Did we have a change order on this project?
There have been some change orders on this, consisted of, there was some eight, well, yes, there were some change orders, ADA ramp for the floating dock, repair of the existing dock, undercut and replacement of unsuitable soils, and then geoget reinforcement in the parking lot.
Remember the reinforcement in the parking lot, because the soil type was difficult, and we couldn't get it stable.
We've dealt with a very high water table being near the river itself. Obviously, that presents an opportunity for failure on compaction testing, and that was, has attributed to some undercutting requirements. That is now complete. We do anticipate one small area potentially when we do the profl again, but we do still have funds available in that change order, so we would, we are not anticipating additional change orders beyond the undercut that we've had today.
We feel good about all the flat work, all the flat concrete work that's, that's installed at this point?
Yes, sir. Both the contractor, as well as ourselves, as well as Kershaw County personnel have all been out there, including yourself, have been out there taking a look at the concrete to ensure it's up to standards. So we've been out there with our slope level, checking to make sure it meets the plans. We've had compaction, or testing from the concrete, compressive strength testing, and we have those reports available, and we've passed on the concrete that's been installed.
Good. So being that we've got low water on the river, and we're gonna be able to start pouring the last of that concrete that's affected by high water...
Yes, sir.
What do we, what do we foresee a completion date? Because I know we've got that, we've got curb and gutter, and asphalt, and am I missing anything else?
We've got a little bit of grassing in fence. We've got the fence to do as well. Based on conversations again this morning with the contractor, they anticipate two weeks after Friday to have this, is what they need to get completed. Now, obviously, if we have some rain days, that can push that out, but they need two and a half weeks of working days left to be finished up.
Okay. I just know, as we, as we come into the fall, it should be an easy time to work, but as it gets into late fall, we're gonna start getting rain.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I think this, August has proven that Mother Nature tends to do what it wants to do. But the good news is, once we get out of the concrete, the river shouldn't affect us as much, unless we get to flood stage, extreme flood stage, but just action stage was at 16 feet. That won't concern us for the parking lot itself, but the flood stage up around 24 feet is where we start having complications on site. But if we can get two weeks of good work in there, we can have the project behind us.
Obviously, we're gonna be three, four months late, but my greatest concern is to make sure that what Kershaw County and the people of Kershaw County end up with is an absolute good product, and...
That's correct. Yep. Yeah, there's been no bid on the project specifications. We've held the contractor to that, and that's what's came out of those two concrete pads that you referenced being torn out, because they did not meet specifications, both in quality and compressive strength. So they were removed, and the standard's being held.
And all the rest of the concrete's gonna be tied together? The existing pads that have been moved, they'll be, they'll be tied together with...
With rebar.
Rebar.
Yep, that's correct.
They're gonna be, they're gonna all have rebar pads built into them...
That's correct.
So the strength of the concrete's high.
That's correct. Yep.
Perfect. I'm looking forward to getting this behind us. I'm looking forward to seeing it being used.
There's a few people in that same boat, let's use that, with you, sir.
Oh. Yeah. Well, we're looking forward to that. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. All right. Next up is Woodward Park. We've got some, this is the conceptual layout showing the four baseball fields, the hub-and-spoke concept, the soccer fields, basketball courts, and parking lots. Not a whole lot of change from concept to construction plans, so there weren't a lot of surprises that came about that altered that plan from the conceptual phase. So this project's moving along quite well. Looking at a December completion date based on the contract completion. This project is also a KBI construction project, so that would be Kershaw Builders Incorporated of Lugoff. These are some photos, again, from last Friday, showing some of the progress on the grading and some of the shelters going up that are in place on the site that would serve as concession stands for this facility. That project started in February of this year, and we're looking to be completed within the calendar year 2025.
Hold tight, write that for me, please.
Sammy, you got questions?
No, I'm just trying to write down some information. Go back to your other slide.
Here? Are you looking at the pictures?
I want the timeline there, what you got.
Oh, timeline.
Thank you.
Can you go back to the timeline? Sammy had a question regarding the timeline on the boat ramp.
Oh, sorry. I thought you meant on Woodward.
Well, he, he did, but he was, he was asking me, kind of, did y'all, do we have a new dead, drop-dead date on, on being done? I know you said two and a half working days.
The contract has not been changed, but what we're anticipating, based on discussions with the contractor this morning, they needed two weeks after Friday, so we'd be looking at September 12th, barring any rain completion dates, or rain that would cause an impact to that date.
October 1st is what I just heard.
Is, is, yeah.
That was that conversation. I've, there's a little bit built in there, based on what we talked about. He wanted three, four days. We gave him, I'm telling you, two weeks.
Okay. Well, I'll be checking with you most mornings.
Yes, sir, you do. We, yes, sir. You have been frequently checking on this one, and we appreciate that, and we've been talking with Mr. Caleb each morning.
Good.
He's now got to the point where he's calling me before we call him, so...
Good.
That's, that's a good position we'd like to get to.
Good. Thank you.
Absolutely. Any questions on Woodward Park?
I just have a comment generally for the council to consider. I've asked the administrator to figure out if there is a way that we can stub out for food trucks at both West Watery and this location before we get in a position where we're like thinking, huh, maybe we have to cut through the concrete or asphalt that gets put down. We might have funds in ATAX or otherwise that could be eligible for this, and so it's not a real point of discussion for tonight, but it might be something we look at doing. I think if you'd had some more food-minded folks on the front end, they might have emphasized this a little bit more, but otherwise, large groups out here might have long concession lines, and we have a pretty vibrant food truck industry in Kershaw County. Some folks even come from, from far and away to come and provide really good food over here, but they like the recreation opportunity, and the folks seem to like the food. I know my kids do as well. So I just want to put that on your radar.
Some things that we can do now to help with that, if the funding is an issue, we could at least just have conduit sleeves put in place. That way, we aren't ripping up concrete and asphalt later. We can put in sleeves that you could run utilities at a later date if funds are in issue. That way, it'd be a smaller capital expenditure now, and it wouldn't be an impact to the schedule, so we'll look at that with our team.
Thanks, yeah. I've just asked the administrator to bring us some ideas, but whether it's just sleeves or we can actually stub it out or not, or participate with City of Camden or otherwise, I think it's a good opportunity we should at least consider, and then figure out whether or not we can really do it.
Understood.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Last one up, Mount Olivet Overlay. This is essentially near the Prestige Farms facility, if you're not familiar with that. Governor's Hill Industrial Park, so we've got some overlays still to be completed...
We're good.
...to help serve that facility. It's being considered on item number 11 tonight. Here's a couple of pictures of that area. We did some roadway widening on Dr. Humphrey's roadway as well. We did some roadway widening on Dr. Humphrey's roadway as well, see some photos from right around the corner of that facility. And then here, the due date to proceed date would be determined if it is approved tonight. That is a 90-day project, and steed clearing of Jackson is, who's up for recommendations this evening.
Hold tight.
Mr. Thompson, any questions or comments?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Any further from those who are present? Appreciate your alliance coming out, thanks, Kyle.
Thank you all for the time, appreciate it.
Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle.
Yep, thank you.
All right, gentlemen, that takes us to item number 8A, approval of minutes. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion with approved minutes.
Mr. Cato, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Tucker's a second. Any discussion at all? Seeing none, we'll move it to a vote. All those voting in person, raise your hand in favor, if you are in favor. It's unanimous for those who are in person. Mr. Thompson, how do you vote on the minutes?
I vote yes.
That is a yes for Mr. Thompson remotely. It passes, Ms. Hannah. Item number 9A is next up on the agenda. This is regarding an amendment to the Unified Code and ZLDR to improve and clarify procedures and timelines. And I believe originally was placed on by Mr. Schumake.
It was.
Okay, do we have a motion on first reading?
I'll make a motion that we adopt first reading.
Mr. Schumake has the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Tucker has a second. Any discussion, Mr. Schumake?
Yeah, just, this is something we voted to send to the planning commission, it's now back to us for three readings to be part of ordinance, and basically, what this does, gentlemen, is, it basically makes our local ZLDR match with state law. So in our current local ZLDR, it says that planning and zoning commissions will be received by county council before any action is taken, but state law actually says that, state law actually, is my time up?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Clancy's time's up.
State law actually says that they should have the 30 days or less, and so this just makes our local ordinance match the state law. So, basically, what this does is it's, it does two things. In the first part of our local ordinance, it changes, it changes it to say that when we send something to planning commission, they have 30 days after referral, or the first business day following the date, the earliest of. And then it just, the only other change is in our public hearing statute, it says 30 days of public hearing unless the statute allows for a shorter time. Some state statutes allow us to do a public hearing within 15 days, so, or 30, or less than 30 days in advance. So basically, it just rolls us back to the state statute. One thing I did wanna mention, the planning commission came back with a recommendation that we approve an ordinance that says they'd be given 60 days after referral. Even if I thought that was a good idea, which I have my issues, and I think Mr. DeBose can back me up on this, the state law is clear that the planning commission has no more than 30 days. So even if we wanted to get the planning commission more than 30 days, it would be illegal for, well, not, it would be against the zoning law at the state level for us to do so. Is that fair, Mr. DeBose?
Yeah, 629-760 pertains to proposed text amendments, zoning map amendments, and has a 30-day clock on it. Sometimes 629-370 is conflated, which is in the general section, well, the general article, not Article 5 zoning, but general matters, comp plans, ad hoc type stuff, broader concepts and classes of referrals can be referred for a reasonable period set by council. So that does have flexibility, 370, but under Article 5 zoning, you're correct, it is a 30-day.
Yeah, so obviously, if we have a one-off issue where they need more time, we can certainly have that discussion, but anyway, that's the ordinance, it just cleans it up to go with state statute. We're gonna have a lot of ZLDR amendments coming up here in the next six to seven months, and I wanna make sure we have those, we are able to have a definitive timeline on when we're gonna be able to vote on those. So that's what it's about.
Thank you, Mr. Schumake. Any further comments for discussion? Mr. Thompson, anything remote?
I have none.
Okay. Mr. Jones, we're on 9A, any comments or discussion?
No, no, thank you.
All right, seeing none, we'll move it to a vote. All in favor who are present, raise your hand by voting. Ms. Hannah, it's unanimous by those who are present in voting. Mr. Thompson, how do you vote on number 9A?
Mr. Chairman, I vote yes.
That is a yes remotely for Mr. Thompson, Ms. Hannah, it passes. That takes us to item number 9B. This is a third reading regarding the definition of minor subdivisions in Kershaw County. We've already had the public hearing on July 22, and the first and second reading is indicated in the packet. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion we adopt third reading.
Mr. Schumake has the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Tucker has a second. Any discussion? I think we've kinda been through this one.
At this point.
Mr. Thompson, any discussion remotely before we go to a vote?
I have none.
How do you vote?
I vote yes.
That's a yes remotely on 9B. For those who are in person, raise your hand to vote in favor. We have Mr. Schumake, Mr. Tucker, Mr. Brazel, Mr. Conell, Mr. Cato voting in favor regarding minor subdivisions on 9B. All those opposed, Mr. Jones votes in opposition, it passes on third reading. Item number 9C is next up on the agenda. This is a third reading. We've already had, the public hearing is indicated, and first and second reading is indicated in the packet. This is regarding event venues in Kershaw County. Do we have a motion on third reading?
Make a motion that we pass it on third reading, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tucker has the motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
Mr. Cato, Mr. Cato has a second. Any discussion? Any discussion on third reading? No discussion for those who are present. Mr. Thompson, any discussion remotely?
I have none.
Okay, seeing no discussion, we'll move it to a vote. All those in favor on third reading for 9C, raise your hand. You've got Mr. Schumake, Mr. Tucker, Mr. Brazel, Mr. Conell, Mr. Cato voting in favor in person. Mr. Jones, how do you vote? Your vote's in favor?
No, no.
Okay, so you don't, okay, I just wanted to clarify.
You wanna know how I vote?
Huh?
No, I'm voting no when you...
Okay, I got you. We'll just go ahead and record a no from Mr. Jones in person.
Thank you.
Not in favor, and then, Mr. Thompson?
Not in favor of anything.
I vote yes.
Remotely, we have a yes from, remotely, we have a yes from Mr. Thompson, and I'm not gonna apply that to you for the rest of the meeting, you still have to vote for the rest of the votes, okay, Mr. Jones?
I appreciate that, I tried to be nice, thank you.
Okay. And before we move on to the next item, it passes, Ms. Hannah, as indicated, I just wanted to state that I had a call from Rock Bottom Pond, Mr. George Speedy today, just to clarify, they've been trying to do the bed and breakfast thing for a long time, and I've been assured from staff that under this new organization, event venues will be covered under an existing portion of the code for accommodations, and so you can still have wedding parties, but it also allows for overnight accommodations under existing part of the code that would apply here. So I just wanted to mention that for the record. Thank you, Mr. Joey, for being here tonight as well. All right, so it passes on third reading. That takes us to item number 9D. This is a third reading regarding a joint industrial and business park between Kershaw County. Staff, any update on this at all?
No, sir, just to recap, that it is just, again, adding Creed Solar Farm to the agreement.
All right, regarding Creed. All right, do we have a motion on third reading?
I'll make a motion we adopt it.
Mr. Schumake has the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Tucker has the second. Any discussion on 9D?
Could I ask Mr. Temple to give us just a...
Recap?
Yeah, recap for it, please.
Recap for Mr. Jones, please, Mr. Temple.
Sure. It's a, this is a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes or SSRC that will allow Creed to come into the already existing Kershaw Lee Joint Industrial Park, so it's just, it just increases the size of the MCIP and adds Creed into it.
And Mr. Temple, I recall, this one was unique because they had already secured a interconnection agreement with the primary utility provider?
I'm not sure on that.
I think they had, I think Duke was the provider. We don't have Mr. Burgess here, do we?
He may be in the back.
Anyway, that's my recollection on that project.
We had several, and some had not even really started the process, they had no agreements, but, and I can't remember which one was.
Yeah, I think, I think this one was.
I'm satisfied, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from those who are present?
Yeah, I think, well, I think the only point of clarity is the project's moving along, this is just the, as always, the legality part in which you have to, the land has to be part of the business part to be eligible for the fee in lieu, is that right, Mr. DeBose?
Yeah, putting in the park makes it eligible for certain other job credits as well, but yeah, this is pure, more or less ministerial, because the FLO itself, which has already been approved via ordinance and vote by council, said that property would be placed in the MCIP.
Yeah, that was a year ago.
Correct, correct. So this is just effectuating the ordinance that's already passed.
Multi-layered.
Multi-step process, correct.
Lots of paperwork.
Lots of paperwork.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Thompson, anything remote?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
We'll move it to a vote. Mr. Thompson, how do you vote on 9D?
I vote yes.
That's a yes remotely for Mr. Thompson on 9D. For those who are in person, raise your hand if you vote in favor. It is Mr., it's unanimous for those who are present in voting, Ms. Hannah. It passes on third reading.
Shocked, aren't you?
Takes us, well, I just had a promise that said you... But I'm happy to be surprised from time to time. All right. New business, number 10, 10A. This is a bid for Dr. Humphrey's and Mount Olivet Road improvements. We heard a little bit about it in public presentations tonight, placed on the agenda by the administrator. Any summary, Mr. Administrator, before we move it to a vote?
Just really quick, Mr. Chair, members of council, this is, again, just reinforcing our ability to serve the Governor's Hill Industrial Park out there on Mount Olivet. Road improvements to include storm drainage and asphalt milling, things of that nature, resurfacing and striping. Yep, so there is a clear low bidder, and ask y'all to consider the low bidder.
Yeah, it looks like a recommendation. Do we have a motion?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, do we have a motion on item 10A? We've got the bid before us. Staff is requesting approval of the low bid. Do we have a motion?
I would like to, I would like to table this until the next meeting, until we get the report from the finance committee, if we could. I'd be much more comfortable voting once I know where everything stands with every other project that we're working on. I hadn't had any clarity yet, and I don't think anybody else has either.
And if I may follow up, Ms. Chair, the vice chair is correct, we're requesting...
Well, let's do this, gentlemen, let's get a motion in a second, and we can just do it for discussion only, that's permitted under new business, we don't have to vote on anything. So if your motion is for discussion...
Make a motion for discussion only.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll make a second for discussion.
All right, it's on the table, Mr. Tucker.
I concur with Mr. Brazel saying, and my question to Mr. Temple is, will this set us back holding off two weeks, where we'll be in some type of more cost to get the project going, is my question. I don't want it where it's gonna cost us more money to wait two weeks, but we'll like the two weeks so we can have opportunity to go over a few things in our projects.
I mean, it's hard to say, I mean, there's always gonna be potential for scheduling conflicts at two weeks. I don't know what two weeks really does for the overall project. Funding is there for us, we've identified it, so it's the will of council, happy to apply.
You got the engineers in the room, if you wanna...
Yeah, they deferred, they deferred financial questions.
Yep.
They didn't wanna talk about that tonight, they wanted to wait for everything to come back.
Well, what I heard was a practical question as well about...
I can't forget.
If there's a, if there's a delay, will it...
Yes.
Is there a remobilization cost or something like that? So that's a practical question.
Mr. Cal, I'm sorry, I missed your presentation earlier.
It was riveting, so I'm sorry you missed it.
He can watch it back online.
This is true.
That's right.
Video of technology.
So is, do you have a professional opinion or recommendation on this two-week delay that, will it be more cost to us delaying this project for two weeks?
More cost, so we have not mobilized, because we haven't been released for the project.
That's good.
There is no additional cost from a mobilization standpoint. Our concern would be asphalt temperatures. I mean, we've given 90 days in there, so there's more than enough time for it to get completed. It definitely compresses it a little bit. Once you get past Thanksgiving, you run the risk, especially when on DOT roadway, you've gotta have that 50 degrees and rising, especially on an overlay, so we're reliant on the temperatures. This pushes us to probably late September start, if you push back. That gives us two months to get the job done, so it makes it tight, doesn't necessarily cost, but I understand, we gotta make sure the money's there as well. But our concern would be temperatures once we get past November.
I'm comfortable, you comfortable?
Yes, sir.
So, just to be clear, the motion we're voting on is just moving this to discussion?
We're not voting, this is...
No, we'd have to have another motion on the table if we're gonna do anything else. Right now, we're just discussing it.
It's discussion only.
All right.
And what we'd like to do is see it come back up in two weeks.
Yeah, so I can make a motion to defer until the next meeting.
Yeah, I guess that's my question, is that, we need to do that to get it deferred?
Correct.
Okay. All right, then I would second that motion.
And then any council member can individually refer something to finance, which you've referred to yourselves, I just heard.
I think it's been applied, but to the extent I would defer it to finance if necessary.
Okay.
So your motion, you made the motion, right? And so I just, I second the motion to defer.
All right. Any discussion on the motion to move to the next meeting?
Thank you, Cal.
Seeing no discussion, anything remote, Mr. Thompson?
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
And again, the motion, in summary, is to move this to the next meeting and let finance look at it in the meantime. All right, how do you vote, Mr. Thompson?
I vote yes.
That's a yes remotely, all those who are in person, raise your hand if you vote in favor.
I'm sorry.
It's unanimous for those who are in person, Ms. Hannah, and so this is moved to the next meeting. On 10A. 10B, placed on the agenda by the administrator, related to Airport Taxiway, Mr. Administrator. Before we move it to a vote, what do you have for us?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, we have before you a, another bid to complete the runway taxiway lighting and signage rehabilitation out there at the airport. This is an FAA grant, there's also some match money, boils down to a 95, 5% match, which is almost unheard of.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Administrator. We've got the recommendation before us, any motion?
I made a motion.
Second.
Mr. Schumake has the motion, Mr. Tucker has a second, any discussion?
I'd like a point of clarification. Danny, did you say that we had a 95% federal match?
It's a comp, well, actually, it's more than that, it's 97.5%.
It's 2.5%.
Okay, so...
$52,000 cost for almost a $2 million project for...
You said 52,000, Mr. Administrator?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, just for complete clarification, Kershaw County is only going to expend approximately $52,000 or 2.5% of the total cost of the project?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. I have, I have no concerns.
I'm just talking to Jimmy, go ahead.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Brazel, you good?
I'm good, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Thompson, anything remote on item number 10B?
I do not have anything, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, I'll just mention that, yes, sir, Mr. Tucker, go ahead.
I'm just, Councilman Jones is looking at me like I'm crazy. The reason why, so let me give the explanation why I'm not afraid to move forward on this one, because this is FAA funds, and percentage is so high, we got 52,000 to almost $2 million of FAA funds, and there's no need to hold this project up for $52,000. I think we can figure that out. out. The other one is a bit more. It's almost a half a million dollars, and we need to check on our project. So with that, I am, as one council member, comfortable moving forward. I don't want to delay a project that has the funding to it that we could be responsible for.
You and I are tracking 100%.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tucker. Any other comments or questions?
Yes, I want to, my two colleagues, they'll know where I'm tracking when we vote. Thank you.
And I'll just mention for context, I've confirmed with staff that the passage of the AOD and the fact that it's in place now increases, increases the likelihood of less heartburn on these types of applications for grants, and so that was a positive thing for us in this process. Seeing no further comments or discussions, we'll move it to a vote for those who are in person. All in favor, raise your hand. It's unanimous in favor for those who are present and voting, Ms. Hannah. And then, remote, Mr. Tomlinson, how do you vote on nine, excuse me, 10B?
I vote yes, Mr. Chairman.
That's a yes remotely. It passes, Ms. Hannah. Next item, number 10C, County Council meeting schedule, placed on by Councilman Cato. Is there a motion?
I would like to, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to kind of bring this before the council as some, a discussion if needed before I bring the motion. We, we had discussed previously about the council schedule. I know a lot of, well, in the past years, in November and in December.
Let me get you a second. So we got a motion. Is there a second?
I'll make a second.
All right, we got a second for discussion. Go ahead.
Okay. In November and December, normally, we end up having one meeting a month due to Thanksgiving and, and Christmas. And I suggest, and I, I think my colleagues may feel the same, if there's any discussion, that maybe we can go to one meeting a month starting in October through January. We know we start a busy season in February, and I think that we could probably get by with one meeting. However, that would be subject to us needing to call a meeting for any type of business that may come up or something that we would need to handle. But I feel like this would probably, probably be a little bit more sufficient for the county and even save a little bit of money. Some of these meetings, we have very little to discuss, and we have to use a lot of resources just to open up one of these, one of these meetings for very little business. So that's just something I'll put out there before I make the motion, if anybody has anything they would like to say.
I'll just follow on to say, I'm happy to call a meeting at any time if there's a matter that the council needs to take up. And particularly in the holiday season, we have a hard time sometimes even getting a quorum. The remote participation has made that a little bit easier, but I appreciate you bringing this up. And I looked at the calendar related to the comprehensive plan. I reviewed that with planning and zoning to make sure we would be able to cover all votes, and your, your idea as proposed would allow us to do that. So. Any other discussion?
So my understanding, Mr. Chairman, is as I recall, when we get to the beginning of the year, we set the annual schedule anyway, right? Sometime around January?
That's correct.
So, 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 yeah, so in January, we'll, we'll be able to resolve what we want to do for 2026. Okay?
And that was my point, too, and I can tell you, because I, I voted against this in the past, I don't have any heartburn through the rest of this year, but I know the first of the year, we get into budget cycles, and sometimes I don't think we have enough meetings because it is tough trying to get the work done of the citizens and, you know, and get staff not to have to spend the night here trying to work with us. So I'm okay for the remainder of the year, but definitely would want to have a deeper dive in for the six months of 2026 because I think we need every meeting.
Want to clarify, it would be starting in October?
Yes.
Starts the second meeting.
First meeting.
October. We'll have a meeting, the first meeting in October.
Second Tuesday.
So it'll start the second Tuesday of October. We'll, it's when.
I'm clear on that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Anything remote, Mr. Tomlinson?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we've discussed it. Is there any other motion that we want to make?
I would like to make a motion that we go to one meeting a month for October through January, starting with the second meeting in October.
All right. But you would actually hold the second Tuesday meeting in October, November and December, correct?
No, we'd only have one meeting in October.
But it, would it be the second Tuesday?
Yes.
It'd be the first Tuesday. If you have the second, if you go with the second Tuesdays of the month, it's gonna interfere with Thanksgiving and Christmas, which we're gonna do away with anyway. So we would always have the meeting, the first meeting of the month.
It's usually the fourth Tuesday.
These are the second and fourth Tuesdays we meet. You changing the Tuesdays now? Going to the first?
No, he's, he's saying the second meeting. He's saying we would have.
Yes, the second Tuesday of each month.
Right, okay, that's what he asked you.
That's what, that's what I was trying to clarify.
That would be the meeting day.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so.
Clear that, explain that.
I will. The motion, as I understand it, is that we would meet once per month, starting on the second Tuesday of each month in October, November and December.
That's right.
Correct?
Right, that's right, in January.
In January.
Which we can revisit that time anyway. All right, do we have a second? We've got a motion, is there a second? Mr. Tucker has a second. Any further discussion on the meeting schedule? Seeing none in person, Mr. Tomlinson, anything remote?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
How do you vote, Mr. Tomlinson?
I vote yes.
That's a yes remotely for Mr. Tomlinson. All in person, in favor, raise your hand. It's unanimous in person, and it passes, Ms. Hannah. Thank you, Ms. Cato. All right, council member briefings.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I may point of order, that's the first time I've ever voted. I've voted against this many, many times before, but I take you at your word that if we need a called meeting, we'll get it ASAP.
Man, we'll do, we'll do a meeting on Friday if you need to.
Appreciate it, appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, council member briefings. Ms. Cato?
Uh, just a, just a couple things. Once, first, I want to congratulate the sheriff's office. That is, that's huge. And, and being somebody that has worked these kind of cases before and dealt with some of these victims, that, that is a, that is a big-time step for Kershaw County and the sheriff's office and for the people that are victims of these sexual assaults. I saw, I thank them for their diligence, and I, I just want to congratulate them on this feat. I want to thank Clean Commission. I seen on Facebook, and Derek has a, a big part in that. I want to thank all of our Clean Commission people for the job that they do and, and their diligence. And, and I know that I was informed that I may have a open spot in District Six for the Clean Commission, so if anybody is interested in District Six that would like to serve on the Clean Commission, please, please get in contact with myself or some of the, the staff here at Administration, and, and we will work towards getting you appointed. The last thing I have is, we lost a, a true gentleman and a dear friend, and Mr. Paul Huckabee here this past month. Mr. Paul was the father of Ms. Jill Wolf, serves on our Clean Commission, and Lisa Huckabee, a Bethune poppy, and, and his other daughter, Kim, and Kim Fulmer, and, and it's just a great family. And Mr. Paul served, served Bethune and the community for many, many years, and he was a great man. And he will certainly be missed. He done a lot for a lot of people, and he was dearly loved. And I just wanted to, to send a shout out to him and his family and let them know that they are still in our thoughts and prayers as they make this adjustment. And he will, he, he may be gone, but he will never be forgotten. And we just, we, our hearts and thoughts and prayers are, are with the Huckabee family. That's all I have.
Amen, Mr. Cato. Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I absolutely want to echo what he said about the Huckabee family. They're just fine, salted earth people. I've known them for many, many years, and they've been dear friends of mine as well. And my prayers go out to them and have been going out for them, and thank you, too, for those kind words for the family as well, Ms. Cato. But now I got something really, y'all gonna, y'all gonna enjoy this. You know, some of you guys, if you haven't been here that long, so you don't have a clue it's what you're in for, because the current has risen. Bill Rogier is back.
Right, right.
Sammy and my brother, that, that man covers the news, buddy. Let me tell you, so, so do you, Mr. Khan. You know, I don't like it sometimes. But, and then, of course, Linda back there, she, listen, I used to see them two coming when I was a county department head, I'd run. I'd go the other way. Bill, welcome back. Really glad to see you out there. It's just amazing seeing right there with Linda in front of you.
Just a little while.
But, have you said all that? Thank you, Ms. Chairman. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Schumake?
Yes, I swallowed a mint down the wrong hole, so forgive me. Thank you. So, again, with the Clean Communities Commission, we also need some folks in Elgin. We lost our Elgin town rep and the District Three person, so we need someone in both those spots. So anyone interested, please reach out to me or the Clean Community Commission. And also, Nancy Carlton Wiley, she was my seagull teacher, and I found out today, actually, just looking on Facebook, that she passed away, like, on August 24th. So to Ms. Wiley's family, my condolences. She was an awesome seagull teacher. So that's all I have. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Schumake. Before we get to our Finance Chair, Mr. Tomlinson, do you have any report?
I have no report today, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tomlinson. Mr. Tucker?
Thank you, sir. Be very brief. My condolences once, as the others, to the Huckabee family for their tremendous loss. Mr. Bill Rogier, welcome. It is good to see your face out there. We, we actually miss you. At least I can say that. And of course, Ms. Linda is a regular now again, so. And welcome also to Mrs. DePaul. Appreciate you coming tonight with, with Alliance. And my good old friend sitting over there, Martin, as always. I do want to say, just for the ones that is tracking, we, myself and the chairman, and he may speak more on this in his briefing, we do have a Zoom meeting this Thursday about the 208 plan with the entities that's involved. So we'll, we'll take that call on. I think you have been for that Zoom message as well, Mr. Administrator. So hopefully, next council meeting, we'll have more to give you, but the county is well aware of where we stand, and I can say this publicly, because I was here in 2005, 2006, we're not gonna roll over and belly up because someone wants all the capacity and leave us hamstrung for growth. That, that's not gonna happen on our watch. So I'm, I'm telling you that now. I'll fight with every tooth and nail I have, and I've got a mouthful of teeth. I've got 52 in my mouth. I'm different from most people. Most people got 32, but that concludes.
We've got all mine. I've got all mine, too.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's hear from our Vice Chairman, Mr. Brazel.
Thank you. Also, wanted to mention, Danny brought it up, about Mr. Huckabee. He was a fine gentleman, friend of, friend of ours and my family as well. To tie that together with what you were talking about with the Clean Community Commission and his daughter, Jill, his grandson, Mason, after the first year of the, the river cleanup, Mason took that over and has, has ran it every year. I'd like to give Mason Wolf and everyone who supports him a, a big shout out for continuing that, that river cleanup. That's a, that's a big deal. Every year, literally thousands of pounds of trash coming off the Watery River. They just, you know, various things, things that float off the leg, come over the dam, people who, who trash the river, unfortunately. It's a big effort to get out and clean the river up, and I think this was our fifth year, and Mason has handled it so well, and I appreciate him doing that for our community. He's a, he's a, he's a leader in our community, Mason Wolf is, and comes from good stock, and it shows. So. There's one more thing I had on my mind, and I forgot.
Get too young for that.
Yeah, well, busy day. Like to thank Danny, our Administrator, for keeping us between the ditches on all these projects. We, Ben was at the State House when we voted on a lot of these projects, and we put a lot on Danny's plate all at once. He didn't ask for it, but he accepted the challenge. And, you know, here we are, working through some problems, and Alliance, I appreciate y'all being here tonight. We obviously want to make sure that everything's going well. That's our job. It's our job to make sure that the, the money's spent properly and that we're in budget, and that the, the projects that the community have, have invested in, their, their precious tax dollars are invested well in our community. And whether you agree or disagree with the project, we all want it done right. And we dove on a lot at once, Danny. There's no question. On top of day-to-day operations that you have to oversee. So Danny, thank you for keeping us between the ditches. And please don't take, take us wanting to have a, a little oversight and a little step back from the Finance Committee. Nothing more is just us wanting to do our job and being that added layer of protection for everyone here in Kershaw County. But Danny's done us a great job. He's, he's really worked hard and always going to continue to help us do that and complete these projects. So with that being said, it's been a long day. I think I am ready to call it a night, whenever y'all are.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I know.
Mr. Jones?
I'm asking you, can I have a couple of minutes to say something?
What you need? Yes, sir.
Just, yes or no? Okay.
Well, it's about to be no. No, I'm just joking. Go ahead.
No, 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 it's yes. Danny, good to see you here. Listen, I just got a letter, and I'd like to just inform everybody of the letter I just got from, from, what's his name? Who, remember, I don't even, I don't even know the treasurer. He's not too popular around my house now. Anyway.
Randy. Is it my Randy?
No, I'm talking about Mark Hammond. Anyway, he just sent me a letter saying that according to his records at his office, we do not have an oath of office on file for the current term as a member of Kershaw County Council, and gives all the state statutes and everything. He says, I am enclosing an oath for you to complete and return. Once we receive it, we'll send you your certification, whatever. You know, the thing, but it is that it was sent. It was sent in. I was sworn in, and this, I was told it was all taken care of by our staff.
Ms. Hannah, take care of you.
Not, not, not the current staff here. But, look, I mean, I'm not upset. It's just typical bureaucracy in government. Anyway, that, that's all I need.
Do we need to re swear you in?
Excuse me?
Do we need to re swear you in?
I don't think so. He just.
If we do, can I do it?
Sure you can, absolutely.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jones.
I would like to, I think it's important to point out that you were not talking about Randy Roberts, right?
No.
Yeah, okay. I just know, because it kind of sounded just, I didn't want it to get cut because you said the treasurer's not too popular around our house, but you were not talking about our county treasurer, Randy Roberts.
I love.
I know you do.
In a manly way.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure that Randy's watching this. He's like, what is that? So you were not talking about any of our county elected officials.
Reclaiming my time.
Not even our current staff here now, but I mean.
Reclaiming my time. Thank you.
Right, right.
All right, so I do have a few items to report on. Deep condolences for the Huckabee family, and also, Mr. Schumake, Ms. Wiley was one of my seagull teachers. That was a great program, and she had a big impact in my life at a young age, and so her life should be remembered. Went out to the Watery River Trash Festival, and whenever I was there, they were still loading trash in. I think it was a 30-yard container. It may have been a little bit bigger than that, but a 30-yard container at least that had trash just burgeoning over the top and overflowing over the top that was just loaded in as tight as it could be, and people pushing it down. So big congratulations to Mason Wolf and everybody that gets involved in that, and volunteers, and takes some time out to go and participate in that and keeping one of our greatest natural resources clean. Last meeting, I mentioned that I would round out the Smart Growth Committee, and I want to go ahead and announce that tonight. So you already have Councilman Derek Schumake chairing that committee, Councilman Tomlinson serving on the committee as well. The remaining members will be Robert Horton from Planning Commission, Jonathan Proctor from Planning Commission, Weston Adams from the community, Billy Smith with the school district, and Jackie Montgomery. And so those will be the members, Mr. Schumake, for the committee. If you don't have their contact information, we'll provide it to you so you can start coordinating those meetings and make sure that we're on top of anything as, as we transition from comp plan work to ZLDR work, that we can stay on top of that and be ready to bring information to council for a vote.
I'm missing a name, Mr. Chair. What was that third name?
Yes, we got Derek Schumake, Brant Tomlinson, Robert Horton, Jonathan Proctor, Weston Adams, Billy Smith.
Weston, okay.
And Jackie Montgomery. Okay?
Thank you.
That concludes my report, and that takes us to Administrator's briefing. Mr. Templar?
Yeah, thank you, sir. Just want to remind everybody that Monday, 1 September, all offices, courthouse, and the library will be closed, convenience center and landfill as well. We will open any sites that are typically closed on Wednesdays or Thursdays to account for the Monday closure. And just on the subject of budget, we are retooling our budget process this year from a staff level, so we will start next month with our department head meetings for budget. Look for it to be a very robust process. A lot of work to be done. So looking forward to getting into that, and I don't really perceive much changing with the council interaction. It's just for us to get an early start and just kind of tie in and commit to costs and projects and things early on to avoid any types of surprises. So any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer them. And thank you for your kind words there, Mr. Brazel. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any legal briefing? Zero legal briefing. Understood. Okay, the executive session item has been removed. That brings us to adjournment. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Tucker has a motion. Is there a second? We've got a second for Mr. Cato. All in favor of adjournment, who are present, raise your hand. It's unanimous in person. Mr. Tomlinson, how do you vote, if you're still with us?